Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lundary Town Council meeting. Today is September 25th, 2023. We're going to start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in crowns.
Our tradition is usually to take a moment of silence here. Just a moment of silence for the great community of Lundary and all the people who live here. Thank you. So our first item on the agenda tonight is we have public comment, but we have a couple of things we're going to cover under that first. Something that's been long overdue since the Speaker of the House stole our thunder. And we were, you know, and everybody had to go on summer vacation. I did attend the championship game. I was standing next to Bob Slater, and it was a heck of a game. Great comeback, great victory. We want to thank you for coming tonight, and we'd like to offer a proclamation to your In honor of the Lundary Lancer Varsity Baseball Team on the occasion of their magnificent and magnificent evening in winning the 2023 Division One State Championship, it is hereby proclaimed by the council, the town of Lundary in New Hampshire as follows. Where has the last time the Lancer baseball team captured the state championship was 2019? Where has the Lancers have dominated with a season performance of 22-1? Where have the Lancers' victims in the regular season included Concord, Salem, Timberland, Pinkerton, Wyndham, Bedford, Goffstown, Memorial, and Central and others? The Lancers defeated the Astros 3-2 in an even game after a very, until, an even game until the very end. Michael Crowley was awarded the win for recording the final two outs in the top of the eighth. Kyle Archer followed with an RBI single that drove Cole Yenico to make a, make it 3-1. And whereas it should be noted, the Lancers were led by head coach Brent Mans and has achieved over his 300th victory. And with this championship, let it proclaim the Lundary Town Council that it extends its highest commendation and its heartiest congratulations to the 2023 Lancer Varsity Baseball Team on the occasion of the 2023 season and its fifth state championship. I think that since, since 2019? I think we got something wrong here. It's your fifth state championship since 2019. We're going to fix that, then we'll get this to you.
That's pretty good.
But why don't you come on up so we can congratulate you, and we'll get this fixed and signed for you again. Coach, if you want to offer any comments, please feel free. That's a great game.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Strong effort, great game.
Thank you.
No, it was a, it was a good game, and thank you. Lundary really came out and supported us.
Thank you.
Sorry for the lack of shit.
Got a good bunch of people here, you know, laugh up, starts with laugh up, starts with the town, starts with the parents, starts with the kids, and amazing coaching staff. And we appreciate this recognition, guys, and girls, and everyone, sorry.
You might want to tell the audience with the microphone.
Thank you, Lundary. It was a great game. It was a lot of fun.
We're going to take quick, quick pictures.
Not, not so much fun for you, a lot of fun for us. Absolutely.
Want to back up to the dice?
If you guys can back up all the way to the little stand in between you.
He's going to have to get in the front though. He can't be in the back.
Yikes, all right. All right, awesome, thank you, guys.
Thank you. And Coach, we'll, we'll get this, we'll get this fixed and have it sent over to the school. I'm Pfarro's neighbor. Yeah, we'll send it with him. Terrific. Thank you for coming. You're very welcome.
Thank you, guys, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, our second item is, after the fun sub here is the introduction of the new town employees.
Mr. Chairman, I'll lead that one off. You know, from one happy item to another. I'm happy to report that we have four new town employees here with us this evening. And I will introduce the first two, and then Kelly Karen will introduce the second. In our recreation department, and I'd like to note that Art's director is, Art Salitis is here as well this evening, so I thank him for attending. This is something that Art has long been advocating for, and that is reinforcing the staffing in his department, really investing in the recreation department in a way that's going to set us up for success in the future. I'm happy to report that Doug Cole, the Assistant Rec Director, has recently joined us. He comes to us with a background in recreation. He has a bachelor's degree in Recreation Management and Policy, a minor in Business Administration from UNH, and he has a master's in Sports Management from the Southern New Hampshire University. He worked since 2015 in Salem as the Recreation Coordinator, and of additional interest, did an internship in Recreation with the United States Coast Guard. So I'm very happy to welcome Doug to Town Hall. I'm also very pleased to introduce you to Cameron Mayer. Cameron is my new executive assistant, supporting not only the town manager but the town council. Grew up in Lundary, from leap to 12th grade, educated in the Lundary program and school district. Has a background in organizational leadership and business management, that's his bachelor's degree, and his master's degree is currently in progress, an MBA with a focus on organizational leadership. He has experienced high level of customer service and support experience in the utilities industry, so certainly a difficult industry there. I couldn't be happier to have these employees who are already making an impact, and I will turn it over to Kelly to introduce her two new employees.
Thank you. So in my department, Planning and Economic Development, we have two new employees. Benjamin Bennett is our new town planner. Ben has a bachelor's degree in economics and sustainability, as well as a master's degree in urban and regional planning. He has experience in municipal and regional planning, as well as in the private sector. Ben is also a veteran, having served the US Army in the 82nd Airborne. So we're very happy to have Ben with us. He's hit the ground running so far. As you know, we're very busy in my department. Next is our new GIS manager and comprehensive planner, Michael Bezigian, who holds a bachelor's degree in computer information systems, as well as experience in the city of Westfield and the town of North Reading, Mass, as a GIS manager and a GIS coordinator. So, welcome.
Congratulations to all, and welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, this is public comment. Is there anything further from the public?
Can I start our public comment?
Can you say something?
Yeah, I'd like to.
You can say something.
I'd like to thank everybody that participated in the Senior Expo on Saturday, everybody that organized it and ran it. It was very well run, it was very well done, very well attended, got a lot of positive comments while I was there walking around, and I just want to make sure everybody gets thanked for the hard work they did. It was really a good expo, and it was well attended, so thank you all.
I'd like to add to that. How you doing? Jim Green, 22, Sugar Plum Lane in Lundary. And I, I can't tell you how good I feel after the expo. And one of the big parts of that is the immense participation of this town in that event. Everything from the Police Association providing refreshments for the event, to the members of the committee, to the police department, fire department, library, historical society, assessor's office, the town manager's office was there. You don't see that at the commercial, how do I put this? Many of these expos are just another place for people to sell things. The Lundary Expo was for people who provide services, and I thought it was wonderful for the people, and even the vendors were saying that they were happy because they were learning things they didn't know before. So again, I just can't thank enough all of the people in the town that worked so hard to make that happen, and, and thank you so much.
Thank you to you and the committees as well, Jim. Thank you. Anything further from the council? Anything further from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to move to the public hearing. I'll accept the motion to open the public hearing.
So moved, second.
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Public hearing, resolution 2023-15, acceptance of unanticipated revenue under 31:95B, a grant received by the New Hampshire Department of Safety, Office of Highway Safety in the amount of $14,400.
Mr. Chairman, I gave the Finance Director the night off, understanding the budget season is coming quickly, and he trusted me to handle this one on my own, so let's see how that goes.
Well, okay.
So, this is a, every so often, every so often, the Department of Safety hands out money to do additional traffic enforcement. This is one of those grants. We need to, as you know, accept it as unanticipated revenue so that we can get extra patrols out there, and that is the purpose of the item before you tonight.
Any questions, council? It's a public hearing, any questions from the public?
John.
Yes.
So this money would be more directly utilized by the police department, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Seeing none, accept the motion to approve resolution 2023-15.
So moved, second.
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, second.
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, public hearing is now closed. New business, Leach Library Programming and Participation Update. Hi, Aaron, how are you?
Hi, good evening. So I just came to kind of give an update of what's happening at the library. So hello and thank you for this opportunity. I just, for summer reading, we had a very successful summer reading program during the months of June, July, and August, we had close to 21,000 visitors at the library, and over 53,000 items were checked out. So that beat last year by quite a bit. 881 people signed up for summer reading, and they read a combined of 8,951 books, and that's between adult, young adult, and children's. In addition, we hosted 74 programs with over 1,500 people attending. So it was very, very busy, which we love. We also want to thank the local businesses that donated prizes to our summer reading program, which obviously made, helped to make it a great success. I also wanted to mention that September, which is coming to a close, but it's not over yet, is National Library Card Sign Up Month. So if you don't have a library card, I encourage everyone to get one. You can come in and take advantage of all these items that we now have at the library, and it's very easy to do. So I also encourage you to check to see if your library card expires. As a reminder, to keep our database and every, all the records updated, we do expire them every three years. So, and that's just to make sure that we have all the right information. So I encourage you to come in and see about that. I also want to mention we have a new online program registration and museum pass reservation system. So now you can reserve a museum pass or sign up for a program 24 hours a day through our new software that allows you to do this day or night. So if you decide at midnight you want to go to the zoo, you can check to see if it's available. And so far, it's been great. People have been using it, and if you have any questions, you can always call the library as well. But I wanted to do a big shout out to the town IT department, which was so helpful in getting this off the ground for us. And I just wanted to mention a couple of programs that are coming up. October 5th is, at 6:30, is the Eastern Coyotes of, in New Hampshire, which is cosponsored by the Lundary Conservation Commission. And October 18th at 7:00 is Ghosts and Legends with Jeff Bellinger. This is a joint program that we're doing with the Dairy Public Library, and it's going to be at the Dairy Opera House, which is a beautiful building if you haven't been there. It's going to be very interesting. I also just want to remind everyone that the Board of Trustees meets every month, so, except for July and August, on the first Wednesday of the month. So these meetings are open to the public, and everyone is welcome to come. Our next meeting is October 4th. So, you guys have any questions?
Any questions, Aaron?
I do. So for the, the online museum passes, can, do they print out the pass, or can they show it on their phone?
So it'll show, it'll show up on your phone.
Awesome.
Yeah, you will have, obviously you have the ability to print it out if you can, but you can, it'll show up on your phone, and then you can just show that to the front desk of the museum.
That's great, awesome.
There are still a few passes that you have to come in and pick up, but that's because the museum hasn't had the opportunity to change it over to an online system.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome, sure.
For those at home who may not know about the museum program, can you go a bit more into the whole program and the different?
Yeah, so it's a, we have museum passes to, I think, about 15, almost 16 museums or parks or zoos, and they give you a discounted admission to those places. So Museum of Science, Zoos of New England, you get a discount, and usually that discount is for, up to four people. So you can use the one pass with four people, which is great for families or friends that want to go as a group. And they're all listed on our website with the details of what each pass will give, what discount each pass does.
And is it one family per day that it's available, or is it different per museum?
It depends upon the museum pass. Some museum passes, we have multiple for one day, some is just specific for one day, but it would depend upon the pass.
I will say, my family and I took advantage of it back in the wintertime at the aquarium.
Oh, neat.
And the big advantage of the one at the aquarium is, right now, they're limiting people throughout the day who may go in at any certain time, and with our pass through the library, you can go in and you're not on a certain time block.
Right.
So it's a big advantage, I think, to have this pass.
Yeah, and we do recommend that if you do get a pass, to check with the museum or location, because some of them do have a reservation system that you have to follow, because some of them are still practicing some, like not overcrowding, but overall, you still are able to use the discount of the passes. It's just a couple extra steps on their end, so. Yeah, any other questions? Comments, concerns?
Nope, thanks, Aaron. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, order 2023-13, the expenditure of maintenance trust funds for the fire department door sensors.
Mr. Chairman, can we take that one? Director Wally is tied up elsewhere at the moment. He's expected later this evening.
Who may not be here.
Moving fast. This one doesn't have to happen tonight if, if he doesn't make it back.
Okay. We'll table that for now. Resolution 2023-16, establishing Beautify Lundary as a town committee.
Mr. Chairman, I, this is something that we talked to you about in concept last time around. The administrative support coordinator has done the legwork on this, so I'll kick it over to her to explain what you have in your packet for decision tonight.
Thank you. So I spoke with the current chair of Beautify Lundary over the weekend, Joy Muller, and based on my discussions with her and discussions with the finance director, we came to the conclusion that we think Beautify Lundary would function best as an individual freestanding town committee, and the best analogy I came up with was to the Lundary Arts Council, where their ad hoc members appointed by the town council. And that way, it would allow them to continue with all their same duties that they have right now, and would free them up from being a subcommittee of another group that maybe doesn't connect to their mission quite as directly as the Solid Waste Committee did. You'll notice in the packet I included a charge for the committee that I wrote up. This is, the language from this is taken pretty much directly from all the other charges that you have for committees that you have approved in the past, taking into consideration their current membership size. Five seemed the appropriate number, but obviously, if you would like to amend that, please feel free. And then I'll leave you with any questions you might have about this.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, and resolution 2023-16 is approved.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a question now that you've approved it? Would you like the people who are currently on the commission to come before you to sign an oath of office or interview, or would you like to just simply confirm them as members of the committee?
They're ad hoc?
Mm-hmm.
I think we can simply confirm them.
Great. I'll get in contact with Joy and get that in process then.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-16, dissolving of the Solid Waste Committee.
Mr. Chairman, again, I will kick this over to the administrative support coordinator to get you oriented.
This is the most I've spoken at any town council meeting yet, I think, and that's surprising, because I talk a lot. So again, this one is nothing new. This is based on the information that Town Manager Malaguti and the Chair of the Utilities Committee Lynn Wiles gave you last town meeting. It simply states the origins of the Solid Waste Committee, identifies the redundancy of its mission, now that we have a robust Department of Public Works and Department of Engineering and Environmental Services and a Utilities Committee.
Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. 2023-17 is approved. Number five, review term expiration list for appointed town boards.
And that would be me again. I'm going to try and speak.
No kicking over to do on this one, Mr. Chairman, since my name is not listed.
I'll make sure I do that next time, though. I'll talk, try and talk slowly on this one, so I don't outpace Dave. I provided you with a list of what I anticipate, the, what I anticipated at the time as the current openings for appointed boards would be this year. The town charter and the municipal code ask that we post these at least three months in advance of the terms expiring, and all these terms expire on December 31st, 2023. Since then, I have, we had some conflicting records, and so I did a little bit more research even after sending this. I'm, we're, the zoning board of adjustment and the full member on the SNH Planning Commission are not actually vacant this year. However, I did discover that we have two vacant positions on the Senior Resources Committee, and we currently only have two alternates for the Conservation Committee, and we have an opening for a third, so I will be adding that to my list moving forward.
Okay.
With the size of this list, I wanted to establish timelines with you tonight about when you would like the posting deadline and when you would like to conduct the interviews for these moving forward through budget season.
Please send the council the list, and we'll give you an answer next Monday at our meeting.
Okay, perfect. Was there any concerns or questions you had on this beyond? As you might know, the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission goes to the Planning Department and the Planning Board first before going to you, but it does go through the same posting process.
Yeah, since we have a meeting next Monday, since we're trying to get back on schedule here for budgets, send it to us, and we'll give you an answer next Monday.
Are you fine if I post the final list to the public?
Post them all, just so that we can give you an answer on what you asked.
And the timing? Fantastic. All right, thank you.
You guys all right with that?
Yep.
Sorry, should have asked.
No, you're fine.
Do you, do you just want to tell us about these fire door sensors, or do you really want to wait for Dave?
I can do my best, Mr. Chairman. I'm, you know, at a high level familiar with this. This is a concern. You know, you drive, you drive past a fire station, you, you often see the doors open, and, you know, there's, there's good reasons for that. Right now, our HVAC system is such that it, that it will run, you know, to a certain set point, and we do our best to make sure that the set point is where it needs to be, but it, it really creates some inefficiencies and, and is really not a best practice in terms of running something if the door is open. And so.
Yeah, that makes complete sense.
Yeah, and so the cost to install these, you know, we work with ENE, which, which we have a very good relationship with, they do a lot of work, they've done other energy efficiency work at the fire stations, each of the fire departments. So the recommendation was to install these door position monitors so that the HVAC system just will not run if the door is open. We anticipate a cost savings, we anticipate less wear and tear on the equipment and machinery. The cost to do it is $19,840, and that is because there are 20 magnetic door switches at Central North Station and South Station. There is a $6,014 deduct if wiring is not run in conduit. My understanding is that the plan is to do just that, not to run the wiring in the conduit. And this is, I will just note, one of the, you know, since Dave took over, the practice has been to come to the council, asking for permission before we make these expenditures out of the trust fund. If the council thinks it's a good idea, we'll go ahead and do it. If it doesn't, then we will not, you know, the work hasn't been done, and we obviously wouldn't proceed with it.
Any questions?
I think this is the exact reason why we have the trust fund, so, nope.
I think this is a great plan moving forward to reduce our overhead costs with our utility bills. This will be great.
With our overhead door sensors.
Our overhead, with our overhead doors, yes.
And since most hotels around the country, if you open the sliding glass door, what happens? Air conditioning goes off.
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to approve 2023-13.
So moved.
Second.
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote affirmative. 20213 is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll text Director Wally to let him know that he doesn't need to rush back.
Okay, approval of minutes for September 11th, as amended and as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Minutes are approved. We have no appointments or reappointments tonight. Do we have any liaison reports?
None at this time.
No liaison reports? We heard about the Senior Expo already. All right, Town Manager report.
A couple, a couple things, Mr. Chairman. The auditors were in last week. Obviously, no, no outcome from that yet, but I understand it went really well. There was an event at the fire department for 9/11. The LPD Awards Night took place, a lot of the council was there. Officer Gueye and Prosecutor Pandy were the Officer of the Year and the Civilian of the Year respectively. It was a little strange for me, having, having won the Civilian of the Year award in 2019 as the prosecutor myself, and having worked with Chelsea after she took over, it was, it was kind of a, a different, different for me sitting in the audience watching that. But I was really appreciative that both were recognized, and, and in particular, that Chelsea received that same award that I did. I join the Board of the Alexander Eastman Foundation. That's a group that gives out money for health and wellness in dairy and Lundary. I'm excited to be joining that Board of very dedicated folks. As you probably have noticed, site work has begun at 55 Pettingill Road, that's the New Balance site. It's going very quickly. A groundbreaking is coming in October, and I think that's going to be just a fantastic looking site once that is, the, the plant is established. And lastly, we're hard at work on water. We're targeting this year to, you know, ask for some funding for water infrastructure improvements in the area of High Range Road, targeting PFAS contamination in that vicinity. I met with, together with Lynn Wiles, with Chuck Morse and the DES Commissioner to talk about that work this past week, and we've met several times with our engineering consultants. I think there's really good energy and, and momentum that we're gaining there, so stay tuned for that as we come into budget season. And then lastly, I just echo what everybody said, I attended the Senior Expo. I had, I had a great time, it was a great group of people, the administrative support coordinator was there as well, we staffed a Lundary Town Hall table, the assessing department was there, and we got a lot of people coming up and engaging with us about things that they find important, things that they think are going well, things that they think could be improved, so it was really good, good event to interact with the community. That is all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Assistant Town Manager, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Chamber of Commerce last week held the State of the Region event, at which Mike gave an engaging presentation about Lundary's economic development and housing status and how we fit into the region. And in short, Lundary is a leader on both fronts, so, very nice presentation by our Town Manager. I know several of you were there as well, sure as someone there, so, very well received.
Anything else from the council? So I got a number of inquiries about Runway 3-5 opening back up, so I did send those folks out the press release.
And in short, Londonderry is a leader on both fronts. So, very nice presentation by our Town Manager. I know several of you were there as well, sure you were there, so very well received.
Anything else from the council? All right, so I got a number of inquiries about Runway 35 opening back up. So I did send those folks out the press releases from when Runway 35 was closed for maintenance. So they asked me what changed at the airport. Nothing changed at the airport. They repaired their runway, and the runway is reopened. Nothing has changed. It's the same length, it's the same runway, so everything's the same at the airport, it's just that the runway reopened. For the council, as of right now, and this may change, but November 4th is the Saturday Budget Review. Please keep that in mind, make sure your calendars are clear, you need to be here at, we'll either start at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock in the morning, I'm not sure which.
8:00 AM. It's 8:00, sorry.
Oh, I guess it's at 8:00 AM.
Bright and early.
I thought we decided that.
It's...
I guess, I guess we decided.
It's to me, yeah. The Budget Committee...
You can change it, you can change it on half before it's midnight.
The Budget Committee will be here at 8:00.
But you know...
Maybe not the Town Council.
Thank you. Our next meeting is October 2nd and October 16th, and then the, on November 6th, right after the Budget Review meeting. I'm trying to get us back on, we have a very weird calendar this year, so I'm trying to get us back on schedule going into budgets. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman, one thing I forgot to mention, but somebody drew it to my attention, and I saw it on social media as well. There's a rumor going around that there's a homeless shelter coming to Londonderry. You can take it from my mouth, there is no homeless shelter coming to Londonderry.